... open. Have we got Senator Antic on the phone yet? No. Senator Antic will actually participate by teleconference, so he will join us when he can. And Mr Lim is now an apology for today. I declare open this hearing of the Parliamentary Joint Committee on Law Enforcement into law enforcement capabilities in relation to child exploitation. I begin by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land in which we meet and pay my respects to their elders, past and present. I extend that to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. These are public proceedings, being video streamed live via the parliamentary website, and a hand side transcript is being made. I remind all witnesses that in giving evidence to the committee, they are protected by parliamentary privilege. It is unlawful for anyone to threaten or disadvantage a witness on account of evidence given to the committee, and such action may be treated by the Senate as a contempt. It is also a contempt to give false and misleading evidence. Witnesses also have a right to request to be heard in camera. If a witness objects to answering a question, they should state the grounds on which they make their objection, and the committee will determine whether it will insist on an answer having regard to the ground which is claimed. If the committee determines to insist on an answer, a witness may request that the answer be given in camera. At today's hearing, as I said, Senator Antic will be by teleconference, and I remind committee members who are participating remotely and who are not speaking to mute their microphone, and for those in the room to switch off their phone or put on silence, please. If there are no objections from the committee members, I propose that the committee agree Friday, the 2nd of December, is the date for responses to any questions taken on notice. And I also remind committee members that the committee will hold a private meeting immediately after this hearing at 12:30. I now welcome Mr Hully, representing Project Karma, and Dr Mark Zinzak, representing the United Church in Australia, Synod of Victoria and Tasmania. And I understand that information on parliamentary privilege and the protection of witnesses giving evidence to the Senate committees has been provided to you. For the hand side record, would you please each state your name and capacity in which you appear today, and I invite both of you to make a short opening statement.
Thank you, Senator. My name is Glenn Hully. I am the founder and CEO of Australian Registered Charity Project Karma. I don't have a prepared speech this morning. I don't believe I need to take up the time of the committee on that. This is our second submission. The second submission really was more highlighting upon the Trusted Partner Programme that we're involved with, with Metta, but the majority of the points we wish to make are in our original submission from August last year.
Thank you very much, Doctor.
Dr Mark Zinzak, Senior Social Justice Advocate with the United Church in Australia, Synod of Victoria and Tasmania. I would like to make a brief opening statement. Firstly, the reason for a church appearing before here is, in our view, we provide a bit of a community check around approaching this. So we did do with our own members, we had a consultation around addressing online harms, particularly around focusing on child exploitation. So that happened in 2020. We went out to our members, we did a year-long consultation process because we wanted to weigh up how did they see the need for law enforcement measures versus the idea of online privacy. Out of that, we went to our Synod meeting, which involves 300 people from across Victoria and Tasmania, both ordained ministers and just ordinary members of the community who are members of the church. And they unanimously adopted a position where they would, they identified that dealing with online harms, particularly child sexual abuse, needed to outweigh privacy as a focus. So the impacts on privacy needed to be minimized, but clearly there needed to be a really high priority on addressing that as a general community thing. And I think that stands in stark contrast to some of the advocacy groups that will oppose pretty much any law enforcement measure or any measure that would try and address online child sexual abuse where it might have an impact on privacy. And I think that those views don't stand well with the broader Australian community, would be an opening position. In terms of our submission, I'll probably highlight three, the three key recommendations we had made were particularly if the committee had a mind to recommend effective measures, no totally anonymous identities online, a provider should always know who you are. Doesn't matter whether your public facing identity is anonymous, but someone needs to know who you are so that if you are engaged in serious harm, particularly child sexual abuse, law enforcement can identify you because the provider can tell them who you are. Secondly, better complaint mechanisms so that people who identify child sexual abuse material can easily report it to the provider. There is quite a bit of evidence that the current mechanisms put barriers in the way of people being able to make those reports and deter particularly survivors of child sexual abuse from being able to report material about themselves. The third one, which came out of the Australian Institute of Criminology, had a conference just two weeks ago. Would have been great if that had occurred prior to being able to put in the submission. Their latest research, one of the key findings was that 42% of people who saw CSAM for the first time did so while searching for adult pornography. So they weren't intending to find child sexual abuse material, but ended up there. Now, for us, that reinforces the notion that there should be an expansion in the blocking, the effectively access disruption mechanism, that ISPs are required to do. We have suggested, at the very least, it could be expanded out from the Interpol Worst Of list to the Internet Watch Foundation list. And further, we take a view that it might be great for the ISPs to be required to capture data about the IP addresses that are trying to access and get the blocked message, not for police to investigate every one of those, but what it might throw up as a large dataset is you could do data analytics on it, and that might identify patterns or people who are making multiple attempts to access material which indicates they are worthy of law enforcement attention. I would also point the committee to the recent report which came out in May by Brian Neil Levine in the US, who was, he was commissioned by the US Department of Justice to look at how to increase the efficacy of law enforcement responses to online child sexual abuse. It's well worth a read. We would recommend also an increase in the funding for the Australian Institute of Criminology with the work they are doing. It is greatly informing responses to child sexual abuse material, and they did receive funding under the previous government. There was nothing in the latest budget that would extend that, so it'd be worthy of the committee recommending into the future that to make sure they have the funding to keep going forward. My final point would be, I think this as a problem needs a public health response. So as much as possible, we need to be looking at measures that passively, without requiring active intervention, drive down the prevalence and incidence of online child sexual abuse and make the pool of abuse that is taking place that law enforcement need to deal with as small as possible. Thank you.
Thank you both for your opening statements. I think I'll, before I go to you, Mr O'Brien, I was just wondering, in terms of Project Karma, how that work on the ground, actually, how you operate with law enforcement authorities? Would you be able to give us some evidence in relation to that?
Yeah, sure. We're conducting investigations in many different countries around the world, particularly in South East Asia, but also here in Australia, and we provide that information to the relevant law enforcement body of that region. And we often work closely with them in following through to a result. In the case of Australia, we've provided information to Australian Federal Police and state police over many years, and quite often that has led to investigations by law enforcement that have led to arrests and prosecutions, and also rescuing of victims. Those relationships are built over a long period of time, trusted relationships between law enforcement agencies in different countries. I've highlighted in the past the inability of Australian Federal Police to be able to enter into any sort of memorandum of understanding with non-government organisations. That's been a problem for us in the past, and it's been highlighted in our submission, particularly in relation to sharing of information. Again, that touches on what Mark was talking about before in relation to privacy and things like that, and we do see the need to protect people's information. But as I've said in many interviews and also in my past testimony that I gave to the 46th Parliament Committee, that there's a lot of information and data pools that non-government organisations hold, like Project Karma. We're not the only organisation in the world that does this type of work. Investigations, prosecution and rescue is really just the second pillar of our Sentinel Model, which we've described in a little bit of detail in those submissions, and happy to expand on those if you'd like to know more. But we're talking about that second pillar at the moment, and a number of organisations around the world are credible and have copious amounts of data in relation to offenders, suspicions, and none of that information is broadly shared with law enforcement unless the NGO takes it to the law enforcement agency. There's no way for law enforcement agencies to know. And that's vice versa as well. And we've found many times where we've been engaged in an investigation that quite possibly that was being investigated by another organisation or by law enforcement as well, and everybody's operating on the same case, but nobody knows about it. And that's a large problem that we see.
Can I ask then, is it primarily privacy laws that is preventing that, or do you think there could be, or there are other issues in relation to whether or not they think that the NGOs have the capacity in terms of security to protect that information?
Correct. I think that's part of it. I don't think it's all to do with privacy. I also think it's got to do with internal policy. Having been in law enforcement 13 years in my career, prior to doing what I do now, I'm pretty familiar with how some of these things operate and how law enforcement agencies interact with external agencies. So I think there's some issues there in internal policy, also privacy and what you're highlighting.
So in terms of the ACCC and how they facilitate cooperation and collaboration around these things, can you add anything further to your submission?
They've been very selective in the organisations they've chosen to partner with, which I understand. However, I think it's only three, and most of them are focused towards education and rehabilitation. When it comes to investigation, I don't believe law enforcement here in Australia are really that interested in working with organisations that can provide detailed information in relation to this. I believe they see themselves as the be all and end all, which I totally understand, having been in law enforcement myself. But the reality is, is that a number of these organisations do hold very important information that I think would be of high benefit to organisations like the Australian Federal Police.
So in terms of members of your organisation, what's their typical background?
Well, quite often, we don't want any background in law enforcement or investigation. I've found over my years of training investigators that quite often a clean slate is best to work with. Bad habits can be picked up early in investigative careers, and it's very hard to undo that. The way we do investigations is very different. We're not the law enforcement, we're not law enforcement, so therefore we don't have access to the type of databases and information that law enforcement have on a daily basis and what I was used to working in law enforcement. So the way we have to do our investigations are a little different, and that takes a lot of adjustment for someone who has ex-law enforcement background to come in and try to learn how to do investigations differently. So quite often, we prefer no background, and we have a series of tests, so to speak, to try to pick the aptitude of a person and their ability to think broadly and conduct investigations before we would then invest our time and effort into training them for that purpose.
And if I could just, before I hand it over to Mr O'Brien, ask both of you, in a lot of the submissions, there's been evidence given that there has been, over the last two to three years, an increase in this type of crime. From your experience, is this a matter of, well, people were locked down at home, so therefore they had regular access to the internet, or are there other factors? So if you would mind?
There's no doubt that the pandemic and lockdown has increased online crimes. We ran a campaign beginning in, I think it was around April 2020, an awareness campaign online and in Australian media, appeared on a number of well-known Australian TV shows, Studio 10 and other morning news programmes, explaining to the Australian community about the dangers of the increase of these types of crimes during this period where children are at home more and online more, and offenders are at home online more. And unfortunately, that was accurate, and we have seen major spikes in these crimes. I think the Australian Federal Police reported 122% increase in Australia, but we've had partners in the Philippines have reported over 300% increase in these crimes during the pandemic. As a trusted safety partner with Metta, we've received, you know, I think, over 300 reports that we've put in over that period of time, and many of those have led to investigations by law enforcement and resulted in arrests and prosecutions. So yes, there's been a large increase. I don't think it's solely because of the pandemic. These crimes were already increasing before that. It didn't help the situation, but now that this pandemic is slowly coming to an end, I don't see that this is going to then lower these crimes. I think there needs to be a proactive approach to targeting the reduction of these crimes.
Thank you. Doctor, would you like to add something?
Yes, look, I think the other things I'd want to add into this is, we've also seen an expansion into abuse on other platforms, so onto, for example, dating platforms, also the increase in apps where this kind of activity might take place. And that was one point I'd probably make is that while apps are currently rated for their actual content inside the app, they're not rated against their safety features. So if you're a parent or a child, you've got no idea when entering an app, how safe that is, what the chance is that predators can easily use that to target children inside that app. So are there things of that app that actually facilitate abuse? It'd be great to see a standard that actually requires the rating of apps. The other part of that, though, is, look, I think there definitely has been an increase, but also some of the measured increase is because of better detection. So for example, Glenn talked about the Philippines, part of the reason that increased, definitely there is underlying increase, but also, for example, the Financial Intelligence Unit in the Philippines has increased its efforts in actually detecting this crime and actually addressing it. So part of the increase is probably increased detection. I would also point out the data that often gets quoted around the National Centre for Missing and Bleated Children in the US, where there's reporting, as Metta has rightly pointed out, when you, some of that, you know, you talk 69 million reports, some of that is repeat reports of the same content hosted. It's still a problem because what it's saying is for the victims and the survivors of that, whose material is out there all the time, that's ongoing abuse for them. But in terms of the number of victims, you know, it's a much smaller pool of the number of victims that relate to that large pool of material. On the flip side of that as well, of course, is that's only detected material and there's still a pool of undetected material as well. So often measuring these things, there is quite a bit of uncertainty, but I would certainly agree there's been an increase in the prevalence of this abuse and human rights abuse online. Look, while I'm speaking, the only other thing I would want to, going back to Glenn's first point, I would point the committee, there's a very good book by Jason Sharman, Professor Jason Sharman, called Vigil Antis Across Borders. Despite its name, it actually talks very positively about the role of third-party civil society organisations, and it's got a chapter that focuses on the increased role of third-party agencies in assisting law enforcement around addressing human rights abuses and the positive role that can play, particularly for a crime type of this nature or a human rights abuse of this nature where the pool is so large that the law enforcement resources will never match the size of the pool. So looking, law enforcement needing to look at how to increase our capabilities and bring on more allies that would assist us without compromising our investigations, I think is well worthwhile.
Thank you very much. Mr O'Brien?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Dr Zinzak and Mr Hully for coming before us today. It's very much appreciated. If I can just start with Mr Hully, can you give me a bit of a practical rundown on what an investigation by Karma looks like?
Sure. Are we talking an online crime investigation? Okay. So we will receive information of a particular content on a platform. It may be a Metta-owned platform. We're part of the Metta Trusted Partner Programme, where we have a direct line reporting portal directly to Facebook, or as they're called, Metta, safety officers there. They have a Safety Trust Division and a Law Enforcement Response Team, and they're regional-based. So Australia is covered under their Singapore head office, and there's a team there that we essentially can provide reports to for any content on Metta servers that we come across. The first port of call is reporting it with them, and they have a process to then notify law enforcement, providing that that material isn't just a breach of their community standards, but is actually illegal and is breaking the law. As you're probably aware, not just Metta, but other companies that have these types of platforms online are held to account in the sense that this content, any sort of child sexual exploitation material on their servers, is illegal. And if they're caught with that material on their servers and not have done anything about it, they actually stand to lose their operating licence. It's very serious. And that's really a result of a lot of the efforts in the United States, putting pressure on companies like Metta. You would have seen the head of Metta was brought before a Senate, Congress hearing and answered a lot of these sort of questions about what the company was doing in relation to this. And, you know, there were some really big problems. From 2012, when we first started looking at this, through to, you know, 2016, 2017, they really weren't doing anything about this type of thing. So those things have been put in place now. So to get back to your question, is that that evidence would then be flagged and it's removed off Facebook servers? Now, we don't want that information to then disappear, it's obviously evidence, but Facebook or Metta cannot hold on to it. So there's a mechanism in place, Mark might be familiar with this as well, but the content usually goes through Internet Watch Foundation and part of the national exploited, what is it? Sorry, it's NEMEC, I always call it NEMEC, and it's held there, and law enforcement from anywhere in the world can actually apply to then get access to that information in order to conduct an investigation and pursue criminal charges. So that's the process, and so as an example, we would receive some of that information. We would see a post or somebody might contact us and say that they're part of a Facebook group, for instance, or a WhatsApp group, and that this content is being shared. They might send us a screenshot, because in some of these, like I've just mentioned, with WhatsApp, they're in, it's an encrypted platform, so therefore unless you're a member of that group, being able to get access to that content is quite difficult. So screenshots and other mechanisms are used to provide the evidence to us, which we then go through that process that I just spoke about before.
So what other, other than online?
In-contact crimes.
People passing on information and you then passing it on to the relevant provider, what are the other types of offences or types of potential offences that you investigate?
Yeah, so the online stuff that I just spoke about is not just sharing of actual material, but also grooming, where we might have an example of a child that's been groomed by an adult with the purpose to sexually exploit that child. It may have already been an advanced stage where the child has already been coerced into providing some form of photographic material, you know, that makes it very uncomfortable for that child, because then the threats begin of, we're going to send this to your parents, or we're going to send this to your school friends unless you provide more of this type of thing. This is becoming a very common type of crime. So that's another example of an online type of crimes that we deal with. But we also deal with in-contact crimes, in-person contact crimes, where someone has travelled from Australia to one of these locations for the purpose of sexually exploiting children. So we'll get information about that, not just Australians, obviously anybody that's committing these crimes. We have a vast intelligence network that I've developed over a number of years, particularly through South East Asia, and so we have reports every day, and those reports are vetted, and if there's substance to them, we commence an initial investigation, and we put a body of evidence together, and then we speak with the relative law enforcement agency for where that crime is being committed and coordinate with them in order to enact a law enforcement investigation.
So at some point in time, if you get the information, you said your first port of call is to pass that information or report that information via the portal. At what point do you engage with the local authorities if you think that it's domestic?
In some cases, we don't, because Metta's processes do that themselves, their law enforcement response team, and I'm sure the Australian Federal Police can expand on this further for you about their relationship with Metta, but essentially the law enforcement response teams coordinate with the Australian Federal Police if it's an offence involving an Australian or a child that's in Australia, and they have their processes in place as to then how the Australian Federal Police deal with it. So in those cases, we don't need to deal directly with the Australian Federal Police. In other cases, we do, and we, not just the Australian Federal Police, but state police as well. We've dealt with every single state police force in Australia at some point over the last six years, and we'll provide a detailed briefing note on what information we've received and what we've done to validate that information, and provide that to the law enforcement agency, give them the best chance of being able to identify the offender and pursue a, you know, a thorough investigation.
What sort of, what sort of training do you give the people who are working for you?
Yeah, we provide investigation training to our investigators, but we also provide training to law enforcement. We've run a number of courses in South East Asia, the most recent, prior to the pandemic, was in Bali. We have a, I guess, a network of people like myself that have got a law enforcement background, and some of them are well-renowned in law enforcement for training, and they're willing to give their time. We're very lucky and very fortunate. I've had some world-class law enforcement trainers come to these countries and provide training to international police and also to our own investigators, which is fantastic because, as an example, in Bali, I have my team of investigators from Indonesia present during that training, right alongside Indonesian law enforcement, and it helps to bridge that gap between our, I know it's probably hard to understand, but being in law enforcement myself, I know what they're like. It's very much where the experts, where the ones that have the power to do something about it, you're just an NGO, and it's a very unlevel playing field. But when you put them all in the same room and they're all receiving the same training, much more peer recognition, and that then extends outside of that room into real life when we're doing these investigations. The attitude's a lot more open and honest and transparent, a lot more trust. So the training is provided by experts.
And obviously, you'd have vetting processes for the people who are?
Yes, of course, yes.
You're employing or are working under you. Can you go into that and how you make sure that the people that are actually coming to you aren't offenders that might be getting information or seeking?
Yes. We've been contacted by people that have been quite suspicious over time, and our processes have identified that. I think that's a natural expectation that people that do commit these crimes, particularly those from organised crime and those that are profiteering from this. So we're not just talking about opportunistic offenders, we're talking about people that are dedicated to making money from this. Yes, we expect that they're going to be trying to find out how we operate and what we do, and we have had examples of that in the past. But when it comes to employing someone, again, it depends what country that we're doing this in. So we have a head office in Bali, which is our South East Asia regional head office, and we have, Project Karma is registered in Indonesia as a separate entity, and that allows us to be able to enter into memorandums of understanding with government child protection agencies and Indonesian law enforcement. Again, we can't do that in Australia, the mechanisms don't exist. But that allows us to vet our candidates with criminal background checks through the police. And then there's, like I said before, there was an aptitude test that we put prospective candidates through, providing they pass that, then we can enter into a training process. But it's usually at least a one-year period before they begin conducting investigations. So there's a lot of time there in which we would be able to weed out any of that sort of problem.
You have one more question, and then I'll have to go.
Yeah. So are any of your volunteers or workers in Australia vetted criminally?
Yeah, volunteers, we ask that they provide a criminal history check, yes. And there is a contract process that we have for all our volunteers, yes.
That's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you. Ms Miller Frost?
Thank you. Look, you've mentioned Metta quite a bit. Do you have similar relationships with Twitter, and are the current changes and the sacking of a lot of their community standards, I mean, how's that playing out?
Well, Twitter's an interesting one to mention at the moment, that's all up in the air, as you're probably aware, with Elon Musk buying it out and getting rid of 7,000 people or something like that. I've been informed that earlier this week, we have, sorry, last week, sorry, that Metta has also cut a lot of jobs recently, so, and we're yet to see where from. We're hoping that's not from their Safety and Trust Divisions. It would be, I guess, completely the opposite to what we've seen in recent years. I mean, Metta has invested a lot of money into building these safety mechanisms, so I'd be surprised if they've cut from that. Having said that, though, you know, these are for-profit companies, and they, all they're interested in is making profit. So these types of measures are prohibitive to them, there's no profit in it, if anything, it's costing them money. The only incentive for them to do it is the fact of, like I mentioned before, if this content is found on their servers and they haven't done the right thing... content is found on their servers and they haven't done the right thing about it, they stand to lose their operating licence, which is very serious. So I think that's unfortunately the only reason they've acted the way they have. But to answer your question, yes, we have relationships with multiple platforms, we've mentioned a number of those in the submissions, I've spent a lot of time speaking with Roblox, which you may be aware of, which is a, okay, it's a child app that many children in Australia, around the world, play games. They're games that can be designed by the users and played by the users. What we've found over a series of months, going back to 2020, is that the way that these kids communicate while they're playing the game is by using another third-party application, which is called Discord. And Discord is a very popular chat and voice chat and message chat programme, and it goes hand in hand, and that was a very big challenge for us, is that Roblox would say, well, we're doing what we can to protect kids on our platform. Meanwhile, you've got groomers on Discord that are meeting the kids in the game, talking to them in Discord, and their goal is to get them off those platforms and onto an encrypted platform where they can start a grooming process. And when you've got two separate companies, each of them going, well, we're doing our part, but not recognising that both of their products are actually creating a problem, that's been a challenge, as an example. But yes, to answer your question, we speak with a number of different platforms.
Thank you. Dr. Zern, I think you mentioned something about a public health approach to addressing this issue. Can you explain to me what that might look like?
Sure, so that, it means increasing the number of passive measures we have to drive down this crime type, so that could be everything from increasing educative efforts, of which the analysis by Mr. Levine that I mentioned earlier, he's positive towards that. I have some question marks, because often the analysis of educative impact is measured by recall, so you provide the education and, you know, six months later you go and say, do you remember what you were taught? That's fine, but what you want to know is what behaviour change does that make, or when you're in the moment and you're actually online, how has that, how has that education delivered on that? But that said, I think, you know, education is one measure, and then you've got all sorts of ways of, you know, the E-Safety Commissioners Programme on Safety by Design, for example, so building inherent features in the platform that actually help drive this down. So, you know, I mentioned earlier, for example, a measure that says you can't have a completely anonymous identity where even the provider doesn't know, that's a public, that's a public health measure, because effectively you're creating a, you're removing any sense of impunity that person might otherwise have in that space. It would be things like, again, Mr. Levine talks about, one thing that would be, there's already some development of and could be rolled out more, would be grooming detectors. So you can actually have automated programmes that help detect grooming, so at the moment a lot of the detection is done by people, you're not looking to replace that, but you might actually help by looking at more automated tools. Project Arachnid that crawls the web, detecting existing material and identifying it, referring it on to then human classifiers to actually identify, is it child sexual abuse material? So it's those sort of broader approaches, because what you're trying to do is really create a, in the mind of someone who might be tempted to engage in this abuse, there's a higher risk factor, so there's less people willing to do it, and therefore the pool of dedicated offenders who law enforcement need to focus on gets shrunk more and more. And then also it means that law enforcement with the smaller pool, when they do do prosecutions, the impact of that as a deterrent is increased, because the probability as an offender now have got a way up, there's a much higher chance of me getting caught, whereas if, you know, there's a hundred prosecutions for ten million offenders, then, you know, my chances of getting caught, I might weigh up small by comparison. I don't know, Glenn might want to add to that in terms of the public health approach.
Yeah, I agree with everything that Mark's saying, and I will expand just briefly. Mark and I were talking about this this morning, something that I've been talking about for five years to different politicians, the media, is that this should be treated as a public health response. Pedophilia has been defined in DSM-V in psychology as being a mental disorder, right, under paraphilias. And what we know about mental disorders is that there is no cure for any mental disorder, there is only management and treatment, and I think that is the mental switch that our politicians, our law enforcement, our judiciaries need to understand. In order to create laws that are going to be effective, we need to understand what pedophilia is. We're still of the mindset of it's just another crime and we put them in jail, and we expect there'll be some form of reform, and then there's a deterrent for when they come back out. It doesn't work, and, you know, we can't lock people up forever, we can't lock people up for what they're thinking either, you know, and so there needs to be a whole different way of looking at this, is my opinion, and I think coming from, as an angle of mental health or coming from a public health issue, I think it opens the door to so many more resources and strategies that can be put forward in a proactive way.
Thank you very much, thank you too. Thank you. Senator Antic, are you still online? Do you have any questions? If not, would you like to have some questions, Dan?
Thank you, Chair. Questions for you, Glenn mainly, is, how many cases are currently underway in Australia that you're aware of, that you've been working?
That we have?
Yes.
About seventeen cases I have on the go in Australia at the moment.
Yep, and what about into Asia as well?
I'd have to double-check the figures, but we have ongoing cases all the time, but we would average somewhere around a hundred cases in Indonesia per year.
Okay, yeah. And with, with the Asian area, obviously it's a huge, it's a much bigger problem there than it is here, how are you working with law enforcement there to make sure that they're getting on top of this? Because obviously corruption's rife there as well, in law enforcement as well, how are you making sure that you're talking with the right people? What checks and balances do you do there?
Yeah, look, corruption is always a challenge. At the end of the day, there, I had to recognise there are certain goalposts that can't be moved, that we're not going to be able to change, and we have to work within them. So we have strategies to try to counteract against that. Building relationships at higher levels in law enforcement is very important in those countries, but having said that, we've seen, you know, three, four-star generals dragged down because they've been caught in relation to corruption, and we might have had two- or three-year relationship with that person. So these are challenges we face all the time. We see it in judiciary, I've had cases in the Philippines where a judge was bribed, you know, and that offender walked, unfortunately. So, you know, these are challenges that we face, that we can't, I guess, there's not a lot we can do about it, other than present the best case possible, and where we do detect corruption, try to have mechanisms on how to report it.
Yep.
But having said that, we have cases in Australia too, that have been either corrupted or just mismanaged.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when we say that, you know, the crimes are more rife over there, well, it depends what sort of crime you're talking about. I would challenge that it would be the complete opposite when it comes to offenders online committing these crimes. I would say on ratio, there'd be more Westerners, particularly Australians, online committing these crimes than there would be Filipino citizens online committing these crimes.
Yeah, okay.
We create a market, and that was true when I started this process in 2013, 2014, where the market was Australians going over to these countries, but what we've seen is with the better internet in these poorer countries, a lot of Australians don't need to go overseas to commit the crimes anymore, they can do it from home, because these countries now have cheaper internet, they're able to get online, so again, we're creating a market. If there was nobody wanting to watch this sort of stuff, then a family in the Philippines isn't going to go and get their four-year-old girl and sit her in front of a webcam, because nobody wants to see it.
And you're right with Roblox as well. Roblox is an extremely alarming platform that they use. My daughters use it, and it genuinely concerns me.
My children use it, and I was the worst person on earth for a week there, because last year I had some conversations with the head of their Security and Safety Division, who's based in Ireland, and as a result of those conversations, it led to, they stopped the feature of the chat if you're under twelve years old. Now, again, I know this is not, it's not a silver bullet by any means, I mean, kids can start an account and say whatever, that's part of this problem, is they can make up whoever they want to be. But if it's been done legitimately and you're under twelve, you can no longer use the chat programme, the chat feature within the game, and that, my kids were very upset about that.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Sorry, just on that last point, one point I'd want to make on that is currently the environment that's set up in the online world is totally skewed, well, not totally, but largely skewed towards the providers. And again, Mr. Levine's, the report he wrote for the Department of Justice covers this in great detail about how the laws are skewed to protect the providers and not the users, particularly when they're children, and for example, section 230 of the Communications Decency Act sort of protects providers from being prosecuted, but doesn't, there's no equivalent protection there. And what we really need is these providers to have, what we've seen really is they really only move once law enforcement or once governments introduce laws that force them to move down these paths increasingly and therefore increasingly shifting. In the same way that, you know, we saw the Westpac got hammered for not detecting and reporting child sexual abuse under the anti-money laundering laws, we need a similar sort of approach to these online platforms to provide safety, and what they do is, you know, they'll argue for privacy of users, but they're not protecting the privacy of those who are survivors. So when someone's sharing an image of someone who's been abused, that's a violation of the privacy of the survivor, yet what we hear from the platforms is they need to protect the privacy of the offenders and the abusers, not of the survivors. So I think it really is up to governments to start changing the playing field and really forcing these providers to move into this safety by design space and be proactive in having to deal with these problems.
I have a question in relation to evidence, obviously in submissions, I think it was from you, Mr. Harley, that there is issues with the law enforcement with different jurisdictions in this country alone, would you be able to elaborate on that for us?
Sorry, just to refresh my memory, in which submission was that?
It's just, I think, in a number of submissions, and I just wanted really, from your experience, whether that is an issue, because we know generally that there's not the sort of collaboration necessarily with all levels of law enforcement with each other, and different jurisdictions, different laws, different penalties, has that been an issue for you?
Yeah, sure, I understand what you mean now. Yes, I guess, you know, we, each state has their own laws in relation to this. In fact, this actually relates very closely to the issue of a public accessible child sex offender register in Australia, where each state has their own legislation towards it, and I'll use this as an example at the moment. We have a federal government that had said, righto, we want to have this, we want to have a national database and we want to have that publicly accessible, and they put money aside for it, budgeted for it, which you're probably aware of. Unfortunately, it wasn't thought through too well, because as soon as, the minute they wanted to do this, they realised they have to work with their state partners, and of course, each state wants to do this their own way. And to this day, we still don't have a resolution on this. So until we can get the states and territory governments to work with the federal government, it'll never happen, and that we find quite discouraging. But that is an example of jurisdictional problem that needs to be addressed if we're serious about, you know, trying to stamp out these crimes and protect the public. I know there's twos and fours for having a public register, we support it, and that's an example, but this extends to international, the issues that you're talking about as well, where Australian law enforcement interacting with international law enforcement and the jurisdictions and how to process and share information. Credit where credit's due, the Australian Federal Police, the A-triple-C-E, have done a lot in this space in the last five years. I can honestly say that five years before that, it was the Wild West, and that the Australian Federal Police was just the best they could do. There are now quite intricate relationships that have been developed, things like the PICAC system that they've set up in the Philippines, they've got a similar one in Thailand, they've got the TICAC system, these are systems that Australia's had a very strong hand in developing, in partnership with our partners like the US Department of Justice and Homeland Security and other, the UK CHOPS, that have all been involved in setting up these international partnerships, and from those, we're finding there's much better, you know, integration and sharing of information.
One final question, because I know we're going to run out of time, and I apologise, but in terms of, is there any country that is leading the way in terms of the systematic response from law enforcement with NGOs that we could look at as a role model, or is Australia one of the leading countries?
My opinion, Australia is one of the leading countries. I think the US is up there, but, and Canada, but honestly, I think Australia has definitely heard the call, and the government over the last five years has made serious inroads, and it needed to be done. And like I said before, credit where credit is due. We still have a long way to go, but I do believe Australia is one of the leading countries on this at the moment.
I would agree with that, and I think, pointing to the US and Canada, I mean, while law enforcement is very critical in those spaces, the laws work against them, just, we were looking at even the issue of getting warrants to access data, like the US Department of Justice guidance for law enforcement to do that, it's like 250 pages thick because of the complexity of US law and the overlapping between federal and state law and the different circuit courts and so forth. So we have a much cleaner, much more, you know, government here has done a much better job of providing law enforcement with an environment in which they can operate more effectively. Still much further to go, but I would agree that we're in the leading, one of the leading countries on this by a long way.
Thank you both very much, not only for your submissions and giving evidence today, but the work that you do to protect young people around the world, so thank you very And we call our next witnesses and welcome Senator Shubridg. And can we confirm whether Senator Antic is still online?
He's on the line.
He is on the line, so, well, perhaps if he lets us know. Yes, excellent.